The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Balsanik, a quorum has been established. Tonight we'll have a recognition of a planning commissioner, Don Slaton, and I'll call on John, make that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. It's my honor tonight to recognize Don Slaton, our outgoing planning commissioner. Don has been serving on the planning commission for six years during this term, and then he served a couple of years previous to that, Don, on another term. So, Don has been our senior member on the commission for quite some time. His leadership has been extremely important on a number of different items that we have reviewed over the years. The Hudson project, CVS redevelopment, Quick Trip, Alina Hospital, art space, just to name a few of the projects that Don has been involved in. One of the things I always appreciated about Don and his involvement on the commission is his willingness to go out, meet with people, talk with people, field phone calls, and really visit the site and ask good questions. It's always good to have good planning commissioners who will challenge you in maybe some of the assumptions you've made and make sure that we're getting the best development out that we possibly can. And Don's one of those types of individuals that does that. So, tonight, I'd like to call Don up here, recognize him for his years of service, and thank you so much for his leadership on the commission over the past eight years.
Don, if you'd like to say a few words, feel free. If you'd like to say a few words at the podium, so we can hear you, people at home can see you. Except, you know, it's hard for me to recognize you with that jersey on there, with that green thing.
Well, you know, when you grow up in Wisconsin, it's hard not to be a Packers.
Yeah, that's true, isn't it?
And you fight the border battles your whole life. Because when I grew up...
Excellent.
You know, you could not watch Packer games anywhere in this area.
Right.
So, you had to be a Vikings fan, growing up and watch them.
That's right.
But when all that changed, we went the other way. It's been a long time working on the planning commission here, about seven and a half years, actually. I started out on the Denmark Township Planning Commission, four years, worked on the Washington County Planning Commission for six years, and was on the town board out in Denmark for a while, then moved into town here six, 12 years ago, and had to look around and kind of reinvent myself and see what I was going to do. This was open, and I had a lot of friends that were on the town board, so that's how I ended up here. It's been a lot of fun. Worked with Mr. Vaughn here, and for starters, with the chair for a long time. It was a lot of fun, it really was. What more can you say? We got a good town, we got a good board, every board's got its own personality and its own way of doing things, and you gotta like it. Hastings is a progressive town, and it's a good place to live.
Well, thank you for your service. We appreciate the eight years of dedication you had to our city and to its residents. It's greatly appreciated, and we appreciate the genuine interest that you took in it and the dedication you demonstrated on the planning commission, so we're grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Okay, council, before us, we have the minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 18, 2017. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Counsel items to be considered? Any counsel items to be considered? If not, we'll go to consent agenda. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Could I please have number nine on the vacation of right-of-way pulled from the consent agenda?
Sure. We'll put number nine as, let's put it at number four, under contracts and public hearing, just because we'll stay with that discussion.
That would be wonderful. Yep, thank you.
Okay, number, okay. And then, is there a motion to approve the consent, as amended there?
Yes, Your Honor, a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Okay. A motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number nine, second by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to awarding of contracts and public hearing. The first thing we have this tonight is authorized signature to amendment to purchase and development agreement on Confluence Development, Great River Landing. John, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Tonight, we have before us a few actions related to the transfer of property, the Hudson property, to Confluence Development related to Great River Landing. And I know that the council is very familiar with this project. We've discussed it in some detail at our last meeting in December, had a workshop on it on November 20th as well. So, what I'll do tonight is go through a couple of changes that have occurred, updates on the project itself, and the amendments to the development agreement on that. So, what we're asking for tonight is authorization to amend a couple of existing agreements and signatures of some new agreements, which I'll go over in just a moment here. What they would do would be to bring forth the development, as you see on the screen, which is Great River Landing. This is the Hudson property. It would transform the property through rehabilitation into 67 hotel units, 19 apartment units, retail space, space for events, and then a great park along the Mississippi River as well. In addition to that, there would be a parking garage that would be constructed with grant funding, containing 119 stalls that would be located on the First National Bank site. That's a site that's already owned by Confluence Development. So, what we're looking for tonight are the following approvals. One is to authorize signature of the First Amendment to the Purchase and Development Agreement. Two years ago, we signed a purchase and development agreement, which set forth certain conditions that we would transfer the property to Confluence Development. We've been working towards that over the last couple of years. It's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated. This First Amendment recognizes certain things that have been revised on that purchase and development agreement, which will in turn let us close on that property by the end of the month. Along with that, there is a signature of a First Amendment to a Public Use Agreement. This is for the area along the Mississippi River, the park, and then a parking use and maintenance agreement. This would be for the parking ramp that would be located on the First National Bank site, and also authorization to provide signatures for closing documents and disburse funds to transfer the property. So, that's what we're looking for tonight. So, within this First Amendment, some key aspects to it, what's going to happen, when is it going to happen? The couple of dates here that the agreement has is that we would close on the property by January 22nd, so in about three weeks, we would close by that date. Confluence would be obligated to submit plans for building permit by August 1st of this year and start construction 30 days from issuance of that building permit. And then, we need to provide substantial completion of the building by December 15th, 2019. That may be the 31st, too. By the end of 2019, that one I do know. We also have some environmental obligations that we have, that we are going to need to provide for the building itself. We've talked about these in detail in the past. One of them is vapor intrusion mitigation system installation. This is a system that would be installed within the flooring of the property that would provide active ventilation of soil vapors. It'd be something that's similar to an HVAC system that would need to be done in conjunction with the other renovation of the building. We have obligated ourselves to pay for that environmental review, or the environmental remediation of that. That's consistent with the original purchase and development agreement. What's different now on this and the ceiling aspect is that we would now do these projects after transfer of the property. So, we would transfer the property, but we would still be on the hook for these environmental obligations. The original agreement said they all needed to be done prior to transfer of the property, but these two items in particular really are done best when they're done in conjunction with actual renovation that is occurring. So, the figures that you see here, the $792,000 and the $150,000, would be two items that we would be obligated to pay for as the transfer of the building occurs on that property. We would have some post-closing, pre-closing obligations itself that have been eliminated, in particular, approval of the SHIP-O, National Park Service tax credits for construction of the project. Those are still being sought by the developer, but not a precondition of sale. So, what would happen is we would transfer the property by the end of the month, and they would move forward with granting, getting those approvals from the various agencies for tax credits. Also, we'd be coming back with construction plans for the project in the future after closing, and then those other environmental obligations as well. We also have with us the parking use and maintenance agreement. This would be for the former First National Bank property. Through funding that we've received, there would be 119-stall parking lot, ramp that would be constructed on the property, be 36 stalls on the lower portion of itself, which would be subject to certain aspects that Confluence could close these from time to time for private use. And then, there would be an upper portion of it, which would have 83 spaces, that would not be subject to that. The city itself would not be liable for long-term maintenance of the project, structural maintenance, but would be liable for 70% funding of routine maintenance costs. That roughly corresponds to that upper-level parking area, that pro-rata share of it. We would maintain general liability insurance for the structure, and then the developer would have the ability during certain specified times to close stalls within that lower portion of the property. Again, the upper-level stalls would not be subject to that analysis as well. Couple of updates that we've had since we last met here. Hedra has approved signature of the documents. We did that at the December 21st meeting. That was a unanimous vote. There was some discussion on ramifications of grant applications and grant funding, which we had at that meeting. A lot of that was borne by our recent discovery that we, or learned that the two grant applications that we had submitted to Minnesota Deed and Metropolitan Council for environmental cleanup were both denied on that. So, we had about $455,000 in grant applications for funding. This would be for environment to work within the building. Those were both denied by both agencies. I've been in contact with them to learn more. I have not been able to ascertain that information at this time, but the opportunities to apply for other grant funding in the future may be available. There may be other grant fundings that we can explore, and we'll be talking in more detail to those agencies. But at this time, without the approval of those grants, we would be drawing that money off of our Hedra fund balance. And so, the cash balance remaining after the project, if we are unsuccessful in getting any further grants, would be about $150,000 at the conclusion of this project. So, fortunately, we've been not able to get the funding this time around. We've been fortunate that, over other grant applications, we've been able to take in about $4.6 million in grant funding for the project. This round, we were not successful on that one. So, when we take a look at the financial analysis, financial capacity for the project, we have bought the building for about $3 million. We will put in about $2.7 million in funding to the building. Part of that would be grants that we've had, part of that would be our fund balance from Hedra as well, to pay for the remediation and the transfer of the property itself. So, at this time, I can stand for any questions that you may have. Again, the action that we're looking for tonight is to adopt the resolution that's before you, that would provide authorization for the amendments that have been presented, and to close and transfer the property. And I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John, for that presentation, council. This item is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Liefeld, please.
Thank you, John. Quick question. On the pre-closing obligations, since Confluence has agreed to eliminate these items, and it might be a silly question, so bear with me, is there any way in which this building ends up getting torn down?
At this point, it's moving forward as a renovation of the building itself and transferring of that. I'm looking to Dan to see language within the agreement itself that more specifically identifies that.
Sure. Councilmember, between the time of the closing and the time that the construction occurs, the developer still has some contingencies that would basically allow them to terminate the deal if they didn't get financing, SHIP-O approval, or various different things didn't happen. So, there's still a possibility that this could not go forward. In that event, the city would take back the property and would be the owner, or Hedra would be the owner of the property, and then it would be left with a situation. It could decide to go a different route as to moving forward with the redevelopment for the, with the building on it, but as the plan stands, if everything goes forward, then no, no one would have the right to demolish the building.
Okay, then a follow-up to that would be with the vapor intrusion system, the ceiling of the contaminated joists inside, we're looking at another million dollars. So, do we do that before we know what's happening?
Councilmember, we would have those obligations that would come forward after the property's transferred, maybe sometime later this year, presumably. And so, we would take those out of existing grant funds, our fund balance, and/or other grant monies that we may receive in the future, but we would be obligated to pay for those.
If I could, I think you were getting at the question of, is there a possibility this work would go into the building, and then the building would be torn down? I don't see any practical way that would happen, because the construction plans would not, would be approved by that time. Confluence would be committed to go forward before they start their construction of the project, and this intertwining of the VIMS work, or this vapor intrusion work, would not happen until they have started construction, their construction work. So, I think the practical answer is no, that could not happen.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. In follow-up to Councilmember Steven Ellers' question about the vapor intrusion work, now, you ended up negotiating the issue about option B, and that was an additional $358,000 to the project. And so, I'm curious about that. What did we earn in that negotiation? I mean, why is it that we are willing? Was there a give-and-take? I mean, I just think that that's interesting. Last time we had heard, when we had had a workshop conversation about this, it was on the table, but, so this was the first time I'm reading it in print, that it went with option B. And then, also, so we're on the hook for that, but what does that mean? That we pay Confluence then for them to procure the work through a vendor, or do we directly engage the vendor to do that work on behalf of the city?
Sure, councilmember. We have a bid on a contract to install the vapor intrusion mitigation system. Hedra approved that bid late last year, and so, we would be the contract holder as Hedra on that contract, which would be the vapor intrusion mitigation system, the original contract plus the additional work. As far as some of the additional work beyond that with the flooring and the replacement of the flooring, floor joists, et cetera, that's something that could either be done by us or potentially by Confluence at that point.
You mean, I'm sorry, so you mean for the crawl space to be, the option B was to be filled with leveling stone, demolishing existing floor joists and adding a new floor? So, that option, okay, just help me. So, we're agreeing that we're going to pay that extra additional amount for that?
Correct.
And then, we'll vend it? We'll have a direct contract with the vendor to complete that work, although Confluence will hold at that point ownership of the building?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I had one last follow-up question. It was in regards to, I was looking at the contract, and the language, I was confused. It was section seven of the amendment, and it said, which, a couple of things which I wasn't sure about, it said that there were minimum improvements that needed to be conducted. And in that paragraph, there are two dates. One is, the first, the first date says about halfway through it, says that "The redevelopers shall substantially complete construction of the minimum improvements by December 15th, 2019." And then, it goes on to say, "Further purposes of foregoing sentence, substantial completion shall mean that a certificate of occupancy has been issued with regard to the majority of the space constituting the minimum improvements. Nowwithstanding and foregoing, the redeveloper agrees and to use reasonable efforts to complete a substantial portion of the construction of the minimum improvements on or by December 15th, 2018." So, there's two dates there, and I was wondering if you could explain, what does that mean then?
Sure. The first date in, the December 15th, 2019 date, would be a date for the completion of the minimum improvements. The minimum improvements, I believe, are defined earlier, essentially the project to be complete at that point. There is, at the end of the paragraph, though, language in there in which the developer agrees to use their best efforts to provide a substantial portion of those minimum improvements by the end of this year. So, he needs to get everything done by the end of 2019, but he's going to make substantial efforts to get as much done as he can by December of this year.
Okay, so the minimum improvements are the entire project, not necessarily a subsection of the overall project?
Yeah, the minimum improvements, I'm looking for a definition, but my understanding there is that's, I mean, that's the majority of the work for the building itself here, and I think that must be defined within the original agreement there, is that...
Maybe Councilor can help.
Sure.
Councilmember, yes, the minimum improvements is effectively all of the work that they have to do for the project, so it is virtually everything that has to be done by that December 15, 2019 date. The end of 2018 is somewhat aspirational. We've asked that they make efforts to get as much done as they can, so that there will be some value in the property to be applied for TIF purposes and getting real estate taxes up there at least somewhat by the end of 2018, but the 2019 is the real deadline.
Okay, now I'm tracking. All right, thank you for that.
Okay, there are further discussion. Councilmember Brock.
Thank you, John. I have a question about the VIMS system. One of the assumptions that was in that, the language said that if, since the HVAC hasn't been configured finally, there isn't a final HVAC configuration, that if it changes substantially, that could change this plan. What kind of margin do we have on these numbers for the VIMS system? Do we have rooms? Because what I'm concerned about is, this is a big chunk of what we're going to be paying, and the Hedra balance gets lower and lower every time we go over. So, I would just like, a little bit of, feel a little more comfortable that we're not going to be down to zero with our Hedra balance by the end of this project.
Sure. No, councilmember, that's a fair question there. We have had, we've had instances that have occurred in which things have been more expensive over the life of this project. With this bid that we have, and the work that Clean Vapor, the VIMS installer, has provided for us, he's provided a plan for the installation of the full system itself. And so, what may be subject to change on that might be where we put pipes related to how their HVAC system, HVAC system is designed, but we have a design for a fully functioning system that we can incorporate into their plans for development.
So, in a way, is that a little bit of a disclaimer on their part, just to cover the, I mean, is it just, is it just broad legal language to cover them if something was to change substantially, or is it really a concern that things would change substantially?
I think it's more of the first, that it's probably more of a broad language in case something's going to be substantially different with the renovation plans on it itself, but they've had experience in providing this type of system on very large buildings in the past, and they feel confident that the design that they have prepared for us will accommodate the system regardless of how the HVAC is designed.
So, would you say, just, is there, is there a percentage of this that is accounting for any overages, or is this more of a narrow number?
With the number that we have right now, that would be the vapor intrusion mitigation system, that's representative of the estimate that has been, or the plans and estimate that have been provided to us from Clean Vapor on that one.
Okay.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to piggyback on Councilmember Brock's comment, I think a lot of the extra costs that we've come across were unforeseen, literally buried kinds of things, right? So, this wouldn't have any element of that, correct? There's not any surprises that may come up?
Sure. You know, as we go forward with the project here, the more we're, more we can actually see of the bones of the building and of the underlying floor and ground itself, the better idea we have to estimate costs on that one. Excuse me. So, throughout 2017, we were in a situation in which we had flooring within the building over crawl space areas, and estimates made on how deep the soil was underneath there, what the substructure of that, and how it would be laid, and we made estimates based upon that. Then, we took the flooring out, the soil was excavated, rock was excavated, we now have a pretty good idea of what's there, and so, we can make much better estimates than we could than what we knew previously.
Okay, council? Councilmember Vaughn.
I just... [inaudible]
Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve the authorized signature for a purchase and development agreement, seconded by Councilmember Liefeld. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have the parking ramp use agreement. John?
Oh, that's right, excuse me. I forgot I'm up here again. Yeah, we were asking tonight to order a public hearing for, well, actually, the parking use management agreement's part of the previous action itself. So, what, with that resolution, Mr. Mayor, we've provided authorization for the purchase and development agreement, parking use agreement, and then the transfers of property on that one with that resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Counselors, number one through three, we need to now do the First Street ordering of the public hearing. Okay? Okay, so, I'll take a look at number nine, then?
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to number nine.
Sure. What we're asking for...
On the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we're asking for tonight is to order a public hearing to vacate a portion of right-of-way related to what was deemed First Street, near Hudson Manufacturing. First Street itself is an area that's located between the platted block and the river itself. What we're looking at is an original plat of Hastings that dates back to 1855, and the degree of accuracy of the river and other items is not of the survey quality of today. And there's certain interpretations that are made on that map. One of them is that, at the edge of the block, which is essentially the, kind of the north end of the Hudson building itself, when you go beyond that to the river, on the platform 1855, it's shown as right-of-way. It's shown as First Street. And so, as we went through a title examination on this, questions came up as to what legal rights there would be to construct and/or transfer property that was deemed public right-of-way. And so, what we're asking for tonight is to order that public hearing for action in two weeks, in which we would vacate that area. Now, through the vacation of that area, a lot of it would still be open to the public. We have a public use agreement along the riverfront trail that provides public access that is there now, and expanded onto the site. And so, we would still retain public ownership, or public use, we would still have the trail system going forward, and we'd still have the park in there, but the legalities of a right-of-way from 1855 would be eliminated from that property.
Councilmember Foltz?
Your Honor, thank you. Well, okay, in the, you know, all of this starts to blur, right? Because we've seen it so many times. But, the last time, I swear, I couldn't find my packet from the meeting in which we talked about it, but the last map that we were provided, the Confluence was asking for ownership of the land that was up to the trail, not including the trail, and so, this is new. And it's concerning, because although the current owners of Confluence are reputable members of our community and, you know, outstanding, however, that doesn't necessarily mean whoever inherits this property, because this is a 39-year agreement, I'm guessing, kind of like the parking, or it's...
No, actually perpetual on that one.
Perpetual. And so, that then, so if they have transfer of ownership, then it actually stays?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just concerning. I don't, I don't feel comfortable giving up the trail system along the river there, because, I mean, who got, you know, who knows what someone, you know, could, you know, a corporation could pull 30, 40, 50 years from now, and wanting to make that a private access, you know, that you couldn't have the trail going through. And so, what kind of, kind of promises do we have? I just think that that's a very valuable asset to our community, to be able to have that trail system going along the river there, and I'd hate to see that somehow compromised into the future.
I'll answer the question a couple of different ways, councilmember. The action before us with the vacation wouldn't change anything that we've previously agreed to. Now, this is kind of a crude map here that's not going to show everything, but the First Street is essentially... but the First Street is essentially in this area, shown on the 1855 plat. And so, what we would do is essentially erase First Street here, which is a publicly dedicated right-of-way. And per the agreements that we've had since the original purchase and development agreement in 2015, the area along the river here would remain in public use through a public use agreement that would be perpetual, which means it would stay with the property. It could not be modified, it could not be eliminated. The public would get to use that property in perpetuity on that one. And so, with the public use agreement we have in place and the First Amendment that we have to it, that would still be there. So, there wouldn't, I don't believe there would be any risk in the future of us not having the opportunity for public use of that property. And Dan, maybe I'll look to you for any clarification you might have.
Councillor?
Thanks, John. The amount of property that Hedra and the city are selling to Confluence doesn't change with this action. You might recall a map we had up last time that showed a little additional red area that runs roughly eight feet south of where that river trail goes east to west. The city and Hedra will only be conveying what's south of that. They will never convey anything north of that, so the trail will stay on public land. It won't be conveyed to Confluence. The area that is south of that line will be subject to this perpetual public use agreement, and that will include all of those park amenities that you see in the upper left-hand corner of that map. That's all subject to a public use agreement, so that will be there. But the vacation of the First Street right-of-way really does not impact the amount of property that's being sold or conveyed to Confluence. It's just changing the way the public owns that property underlying it. It's not a right-of-way after this action would take place, but it would be the city-owned property that lies between there and the river. So, you know, there's no real practical possibility of that being used for a right-of-way. This cleans up the title as much as anything, as far as the reason for doing it. So, I think the answer to the question is it doesn't change where that boundary line was going to be.
So, just to clarify, so the term vacation of right-of-way, because we've had a couple situations now where there's been a vacation of right-of-way, and like, one was with a property owner down in Cowtown, and I thought they actually took the property then. And so, it's kinda confusing, so bear with me, John, sorry, about understanding what these words mean, vacation of right-of-way. And so, in this, for instance, it means that we're just, it's no longer considered a quote-unquote "street" kind of right-of-way or, you know, area for utilities to go through, rather? And then, so just so I understand, what does it become then if it's not right-of-way? Then it is a public park?
No, actually, what happens with a vacation is, let's just take Second Street, for example. That's easier here. So, what will happen when you do a vacation is if you're gonna vacate the entire right-of-way, you draw a line down the middle of it, and the adjoining owners of that property would receive ownership. In this case here, the adjoining property owner is the city. And so, instead, the city would retain ownership of it. There's restrictions placed upon right-of-way. When right-of-way is dedicated from a private developer to the city, it's dedicated in perpetuity for public use. And so, we don't have the ability but for action through a vacation to change the rules of how that property is used. And so, through the vacation, we would have the adjoining property owners, which is the city in this case, on both sides of it, would retain ownership of that vacated right-of-way. So, instead of it being a public street on that one, which technically is right now, it now becomes city-owned property. It's not designated specifically as to what it would be, but it's within city ownership. And as Dan had pointed out, the area with the trail here, from the trail to the river, still remains with this agreement as public property. And so, that does not change. And the area that is south of the trail in this area is subject to that public use agreement. So, that's in perpetuity, and the city has access rights over that property.
Thank you so much, John. I feel much better about it now.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You know, that's what happens when you live in an old city. I know through the years, we've had a number of vacation or requests and things like that because we've got property platted in 1855, 1856, you know, those kind of things. And we run into this issue time to time. I know we've run a couple of issues like this in the eastern part of town, in the, he's Second Street. So, you know, this is not an unusual thing to see come forward. I think one of the things that, you know, actually, you're concerned, and I'm glad you brought that up, councilmember, actually turns out to be the opposite. With the city agreement, with the public use agreement, not only do we maintain the trail and keep the trail, but we also have public access to the property just north of the trail. The public can use those facilities. And that's the agreement we have with Confluence. So, it's actually the opposite. The public will gain much more access to the riverfront, thanks to the developer agreeing to this. Okay, I need a motion. Councilmember Lott?
Not to drag it out, but I'm going to. Just a note, we might wanna correct on the packet because I can see where your confusion came from. It was mine as well. The map shows all the way to the river as being highlighted. So, just to point a clarification more than anything. Then I'll give you a motion.
Does it highlight what First Street would look like? Was that the vacation of First Street? Yeah, I can see why, yeah. Okay. And Councilmember Lott makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brox. This is the motion to order a public hearing, vacation right-of-way First Street at the next city council meeting. Any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Next, we'll go to the parking ramp use agreement. John?
The parking use agreement?
Oh, okay, we did, okay, okay. Okay, that's great, so we've got it all done.
All right.
All right. Let's go to Public Works, a resolution to adopt partial parking restrictions on 100 Block of Tyler. Nick, welcome to the meeting, glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks, good evening, councilmembers. Before you tonight is a resolution to enact certain limited parking restrictions along the 100 Block of Tyler Street, which is just north of Second Street. This proposal stems from a request that we received back in late fall, I'll call it. I can't remember if it was November or early December, but the request came forward from Graphic Design, which is located on the northwestern corner of the intersection of Tyler and Second. And they were starting to observe some difficulties with receiving delivery vehicles at their loading dock directly across the street from the brand-new Art Space Building. What they were witnessing was cars are now starting to utilize that eastern side of Tyler Street for parking, to access Art Space, and perhaps some other things in that immediate area. And this was restricting the amount of space available for larger trucks to maneuver and reposition themselves so they could back into the loading dock across the street. It's a situation that really didn't come to light until Art Space went in there. We didn't witness a whole lot of parking activity on that block, period. But now that we have a residence there and some businesses on the first floor of Tyler Street that drives some demand, along with the displacement of a public parking lot from that Art Space property, we're seeing that uptick a little bit in that area. And so, during the day, there are times when cars are lining that side of the street and then causing a bit of a clog there and creating this situation. So, through some communication with Graphic Design as well as Art Space, what we had worked out was a concept where about five stalls would be restricted for just Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's essentially the operating hours of Graphic Design when they would see the delivery activities. And both parties were in agreement on that. It did take some back and forth and some discussions with various levels of management in those organizations, but at the end of the day, they were both comfortable with it. And so, that's where we arrive at the resolution before you, which would enact limitations on parking to be, or restrictions, rather, to be 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. So, evenings and weekends, still no hourly limits on the parking on that part of Tyler Street, which is how it is on the west side and elsewhere along Tyler Street north of that area. So, that's the proposal at hand. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Nick, for that presentation, appreciate that. Counsel, this is before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Foltz? Councilmember Foltz makes a motion to approve, is her second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Brox. Councilmember Brox?
I have a question about the commercial retail space on the first floor. Do they have designated parking spaces in the Art Space lot for people who are just coming to that first floor area?
Yeah, good question, councilmember. My understanding is that right now, or the last that I looked at it, which has been a few weeks, is that it's posted exclusively for residents. And I'm not certain if that will be changing. It did appear that there's quite a bit of capacity in the lot during the daytime. You'll see, I think I included a photo in the packet showing, yeah, the entry to the lot, and there is a sign there, and this was taken back in early December, I think.
Yes, I see.
Lot of spots available in there. Again, it's daytime, so I don't know whether that might change in the evenings, but even so, it did appear that there might be some capacity for that sort of adjustment that you referred to.
So, they would make that decision on their own property? And then anybody who couldn't fit in that lot would have space available in the municipal lot that's across the street?
There is the 100 Stall Lot, south of Depot Park. There are stalls on Second Street, and then on the west side of Tyler. There are a lot of other options in the immediate vicinity.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get at, thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Vought?
Thank you, your honor. I'm still a little concerned about it because, Nick, you were saying it'd be on the west side, which is next to Graphic, that is not restricted, correct?
Correct.
But if I own the business and the first floor of Art Space, we are restricting those spots from 7:00 to 5:00 to take care of the customer across the street. I just think from 7:00 to 5:00, why are we blocking just those spots? I mean, we already had complaints about parking on the Second Street that came recently in front of Art Space, somebody was parking there, so we put new stop signs. I like we did the right thing by trying to make the two work together, but I'm with you, councillor Brox, are we gonna have spots inside their parking lot then? If I owned the business inside there, where do my customers? Not that we give anybody designated parking spots down there, but I don't want one business saying, hey, you need to restrict that from 7:00 to 5:00 because my truck might come sometime in between there. Are we better off having a two-hour parking limit like we do other places? Or a 30-minute parking? Something that allows that person that owns that downstairs that there's an opportunity there. That's my only concern with that. I'm not, I think we're doing the right thing. I'm glad that they both talked and kind of worked out an agreement. But I hope that someone is thinking about if the renter's on the first floor, anytime in the next five, 10, 15 years, this doesn't come back to us saying, well, how come? And I'm worried about the next street over, too. What happens on a truck trying to get delivered over by the Legion? Are they gonna say, hey, knock it off, I can't turn my truck around in here? So, thanks for working with them, but I'm a little concerned about this one.
If I could, I should point out, there is still, or there are still a couple of stalls towards the very southern end of that run nearest to Second Street that won't be limited by the proposed restrictions. So, there are a few available right directly outside the front doors of those businesses on that first floor. To the very southern end of that east side of Tyler Street, there is room for a couple of stalls there on that east side. You're welcome.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion before us. Is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Next, we have comments from the audience. Are there any comments tonight from the audience? Any comments? Seeing none, counsel? Announcements? Any announcements? Okay, seeing, Councilmember Brox?
Joe is the Utilities Committee Chair, so I guess in his absence, I will announce the Utilities Committee of the council is meeting next Tuesday, January 9th, at 7:30 a.m. to talk about tennis sanitation rate changes.
Thank you for that information. Any other announcements, counsel? Okay, if not, I have a few announcements. First of all, on Thursday, January 4th, this Thursday at 7:00 p.m., the Comprehensive Plan Committee will be meeting. And Monday, January 8th, away from tonight, or I should say, no, it's not, it's Tuesday, isn't it? So, Monday, January 8th, 7:00 p.m., the Planning Commission will be meeting. Also, on Tuesday, January 9th, at 6:00 p.m., the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting. On Thursday, January 11th, at 6:30, Hedra has their next meeting. Monday, January 15th, 2018, two weeks, almost two weeks from now, that Monday, we will not be meeting in observance of Martin Luther King holiday. So, the next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, January 16th, at 2018. That will be meeting at 7:00 p.m. Also, that same evening, the Heritage Preservation Committee, or Commission, will be meeting. Counsel, I have no other business before us. There is no other business before us, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Liefeld makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.